I'll call the East Line Board of Selectment meeting to order today, September 2nd, 2015. If you all please rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We always thank our student intern, who is now Victoria, at the end of the meeting, but by then, you're all home. So, I'd like to thank Victoria for her service to the Board of Selectment tonight, working the cameras, because she'll do a much better job than I ever do. She's never very good. Additional agenda and consent items to be considered? We'll move on. Delegations, anyone who wouldn't like to speak to the commission, or to the Board of Selectment tonight? Anyone? Oh, John Bialowans.
Good evening, Mr. Nicholson and other board members. My name is John Bialowans Jr. of 61 Walnut Hill Road. My first question is for the First Selectment to answer a question that has arisen within the past week. This should be very easy for Mr. Nicholson to answer, because he has dealt with insurance for awhile. Since he owns and is an agent of an insurance company, the question is, how does a company give or process to a person a certificate of liability insurance? Could you answer that today?
I don't do that in delegations, sir.
Okay, alright, that's alright.
You know how this goes, right?
Alright, okay, I thought that's what the answer would be, but I just had to ask it. I have asked quite a few construction companies, insurance agents around here, other towns, and even another state, this question, and they all said the same answer. Call your insurance company or agent, and have them put your name on their policy to do the work on your property. I have sent a email to various people in this town and elsewhere, August 29th, 2015, about the conditions that I had to sign, notarize, and return to Senate Plan before we can get a certificate of liability insurance. They have altered their property so much, their retention ponds have failed twice already, and have damaged our Tributary, Cranberry Brook, Latimer's Brook, and the Sound. And the town is not really doing anything about it. The mediator, Gary Goschel, that was appointed by the town, that we objected to because of conflict of interest, only can do what he was told to by the previous First Selectment. It's a shame that politics is involved, and you know what that does. Blank, blank, blank. It is in every level in our government, in this country, and a lot of people are getting sick of it, and saying, "Get them all out and start fresh." Getting back to the mediator, I called him up on Monday, August 31st, 2015, and he gave me the usual answer. It's a civil matter. Being a mediator in a matter between two parties, he is the judge, referee, and umpire. He should be able to answer and resolve a situational matter that has risen, when one of the parties does something that wasn't agreed upon. Senate Plan's attorney, Ted Harris, said at the June 8th, 2015 Wetlands Meeting, and I quote, "They would provide a certificate of liability insurance as any contractor does." End of quote. Attorney Harris did say it once, didn't say it once, he said it twice at that meeting. Attorney Harris, not once did he say, "There are conditions that you have to sign, notarize, and return to Senate Plan before a certificate of liability insurance is given." It looks like Senate Plan broke our mediation agreement, and their attorneys' remarks and promises. So, I guess we will start again with the process of getting attorneys involved, and a new agreement in place. I'm really ready again, because it sounds how this town government does not protect the taxpayers' interests of this town, for their rights and damages to the wetlands and water courses in this town. Other towns in the area of New London County and beyond must be having a good laugh now, seeing how this was handled with Senate Plan. Who is to blame for this? Is it that the taxpayers all are blank? I'm not going away, as you can see. This is a town meeting, and as a taxpayer, we have the right to talk at every meeting, and at every commission meeting that they have. And also, I heard, I would like to know if it's true, there's a rumor going around town that Landino is going to do another project in this town. I feel sorry for the neighbors around this project. God help them. Also, I heard a while back that Norwich, and I just read it, is looking into solar projects being built. Norwich, Groton, and Boswood would need East Line experience in dealing with the siding console. I hope this land doesn't have wetlands on it, or they have to alter their property and sell everything off the land to get that project going. I wonder if Norwich, Groton, and Boswood will stand behind their taxpayers, like the previous administration should have in this town. I hope the current administration might protect the taxpayers now. I will be back at the next Selectment meeting to make more comments. Thank you, John Bialowans Jr.
Thank you, Ms. Bialowans. Anyone else like to speak in public delegation? Anyone else? Okay. Move on our agenda, approval of the minutes. It says July 1st, we want that to read actually August, I believe, 5th?
Right.
August 5th.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 5th, 2015, as submitted.
Second.
Any corrections or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of September 2nd, 2015, in the amount of $3,907.41.
Second. The motion has been seconded. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. New business, 2A, special appropriation, $26,630 from the CNRE Fund 32, Board of Education, part of that CNRE, for the dugout project. Mr. Newton here, our superintendent, and also Bill Shear here, who's done yeoman's work on this. You folks have a presentation? Usually, Bill and Jeff kind of coordinate something here? Great.
Bill has a few handouts that we can distribute to outline the scope of this project. I'll credit Bill, he did a lot of work on this, and his team members here at the town. Just a little past history, Board of Selectment, through the CIP process, you probably remember the condition of our previous dugouts that were in place, and how they had cracked foundations and were really unsafe. Those were removed. To date, the cement slabs have been put in place, and we're here this evening to request the appropriation for the remaining funds to cover the cost of the masonry work, as well as the stick-built portion of the roof on top. So, that's the 26, and it's 26-360. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the 33-360, yeah. For the 26.
26-360.
26-360, yes.
You've transposed some numbers in our agenda, but...
There we go. So, the brick, important, the work that Bill did with this, the brick that we're planning on matches, identical with the, identical, right, but it's the same brick, with the brick from the concession stand at the football field. I mean, that complex over there, that supports the complex, we want to maintain the excellence that's there, and the look of these dugouts is important in relation to being the same structure, looking the same structure type as what we currently have. So, you have the design, you should have the design layout in those pictures, and the size of these, I think it's 36 feet long, which is fairly standard for dugouts, and will accommodate, you know, the needs of our baseball team. We don't want to go into the season, obviously, without dugouts. So, we can answer any questions, or respond to anything specific.
Is there running water in these things? Is there electricity? Okay. Is there any luxury at all? Okay, so, benches, okay, good.
Are they cushioned?
We have a cement slab, these are not dug into the ground, as the prior dugouts were. I think ADA prevents that now, that we have to be on a flat surface. So, they are, we already poured the cement through operation budget of last year, we had some leftover money end of the year, I believe?
We did, as well as we were able to put the fencing up in front of the dugouts, so that will remain as well. That was constructed for this purpose of, you know, fitting the dugouts right behind them.
And I commend you for that, because that enabled our youth this summer to use those fields. We, and even at the end of the season, our varsity team was able to get back on their home field for the last couple of games, and into the playoffs. I commend you for finding a quick fix on that, and for our public works guys as well. But now, we need dugouts. You know, we had pop-up tents, I believe.
We did.
We had carnival tents there.
We had coverage, which...
But, but it's something that needs to be done. We came before this board and the Board of Finance with just a number and not a plan, and that was, I'll take the mistake on our behalf, I think we were just trying to coordinate with a new school administration, and new, you know, we don't have Don Maltinberger at the school anymore, he used to handle some of the building projects. So, we were trying to figure out, we have the town fit in, we have the school fit in, and I think we have a nice partnership now, and a nice rhythm going. Bill did a whole lot of work in the engineering part, and now Jeff is spearheading a lot of this, you know, getting it through the commission level, and I'm sure Bill will be back on site when, once things get built, starting to build as well. Are there any questions from the commission?
What's the time scale on this?
Thanks, Hallie, I was just going to mention that. We're hopeful to get these constructed before the winter sets in, so they'll be ready to go for the spring. We really don't want to wait until the spring with the thawing of snow and everything else, which makes sense.
And this was put out to bid?
We've got some, do you want to talk about the bid specs room?
Actually, timeframe from time to money is appropriated, the lead time on the brick is one month, and the masonry should take one week, and the roof should take one week. So, scheduling...
So, you wait for the brick arrives, and you get cracking?
Yeah, it's, you know, they make the bricks to order nowadays, nobody makes everything and leaves it on-site. These are colors to match the concession stand. And so, what we did is we put it out on a short bid to trusted contractors that we know can do the job. We put it out to four masonry contractors, and five carpenters, and the winning results are in your packet right there. It is Scott Hartzell Masonry and Brett Pollock Builders for the carpentry.
So, the masonry guys go in, build the brick structure, and then the roofing and everything, the other goes on?
And then the carpenters come along and put the roof and stuff like that on. Actually, it's 36 feet long, that's actually a very, very long structure.
Okay. Are we reusing any existing, I mean, are the benches new, or are we just, this is brand-new everything?
It's brand-new everything. There are benches on-site, which I'm hoping can stay.
Yes, they're there now.
They're, they're not from the old building, but they were somewhere at the school property, and they're sitting on the slab now, so that the kids have someplace to sit currently.
Okay, so ideally, this goes through us, through Board of Finance?
Into a town meeting.
So, middle of the month?
Middle of October, we're starting construction, so, you know, middle of November, we're done. Which is, which is very doable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
A short time ago, the Board of Ed approved for advertising on the baseball field, and I believe there is some advertising up there now. I was wondering if the board has generated any income from that at this time?
There hasn't been any that I'm aware of at this time, per se, but that is something that has been talked about, and something I think we need to continue to look at. I think we can generate some dollars off of that, as well as, you know, with the football field, but that's not something that's happened to date.
Thank you.
Gee, you could have had people bid, put their names on each brick, and offset the cost that way.
There were a couple of ideas along those lines.
Thank you.
Folks, all set? Thank you. Thank you, folks.
I move the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Selectment, upon the recommendation of the Board of Education, has determined that a true and very real need exists for the completion of the East Line High School dugouts, consistent with the 2015-16 capital improvement plan. Be it resolved, to approve a special appropriation to the Board of Education in the amount of $26,360 in CNRE Fund 32, for the purpose of the framing, roofing, and masonry work for rebuilding the East Line High School dugouts, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The source of funds will be $26,360 from LEARN rental fees, and this requires a town meeting.
Second.
Did you give the corrected figure?
Yeah, the corrected figure is...
It's 360.
Yeah, 360. 26-360 is the number. Second. And any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? That passes, we'll move to the next one, a special appropriation of $49,785. DEEP Recreation Trails Grant. That sounds like something that'll be under Gary Gaishell, am I right? Our Director of Planning is here tonight to tell us about this grant, which is, I believe, a three-year grant for trail, trailhead parking, kiosks, and parking. So, maybe go through it a little bit with us, this much? That much?
So, we partnered with the Eight Mile Wild River Scenic Watershed Group to put together a trail that roughly will span 12 miles from Darrell Pond out to Route 82 in Devil's Hop Yard. Within a portion of Darrell, East Line, from Darrell's Pond through the Connecticut State Forest, we are proposing to do trail reconstruction, where we have some erosion problems occurring. In addition, we're looking to put a parking area at a trailhead on Grassy Hill Road, as well as at another trailhead on Whistletown, and improving a parking area at the Darrell Pond property itself. We propose to do the, the work will be in-kind services on behalf of the town, and the total grant award, as you know, is $49,785. We have three years to complete that work. If there's any other questions?
Comments, questions?
Yes. What will be the surface covering on these parking areas?
Be just gravel. This is a gravel lot. There's typical standard gravel.
The parking area at Darrell, I believe, is going to, I think I read, further on, 12 spaces?
Those should be approximately 12 spaces.
And so, those 12 spaces would be able to be accommodated within the existing layout of the rough parking lot?
It, they should be, or we can relocate them elsewhere if necessary. I'll work with the town engineer on, you know, the best, where to best situate them. Ideally, we can use the existing asphalt in that pervious area, that'd probably be the most beneficial. So, that surface would not necessarily be gravel, but we may just approve the paved, the paved portion.
I would hope that it would remain gravel, it's more consistent with a nature area.
Then we'd be removing existing pavement to create that part.
Yes. Is that to be discussed further, or is that part of the plan?
We had a, they were going to, the proposed plan had the existing paved area to be chip-sealed and repaired, so I think we were looking at, I have a copy of the proposed plan. So, it shows the 12 spaces on the existing paved area, so I think they're going to use chip seal.
I don't think we have that.
Do you have a copy of that?
I don't think we have that. If you want to just show us.
Well, if the existing asphalt is in good enough condition to simply have it chip-sealed, then I would be happy with that, but I'm anxious not to have any more impervious surfaces there than necessary.
Understood.
Now, also, I was a little confused on the Grassy Hill Road area. At one point, I saw trail maintenance renovation and minor development, and then later on, I saw indication of a parking area. So, what's going to happen at the Grassy Hill area?
So, that'll be a gravel parking area that we're going to create. It should be on, we had looked at a couple of different locations within the town forest, or within the town right-of-way, and we found an area within the town right-of-way that we could basically strip the topsoil, and come in with gravel, process gravel, and create a parking area for three or four cars.
Okay, so, minimum disturbance?
Minimum disturbance. Just, I guess, as a historical point, the grant application was reviewed by the tribes, so, and it came back with a Clean Bill of Health, per se, so I think from that perspective, we did have one parking area on Whistletown Road, believe it or not. We had to move it to the west side of the road, because there was some archaeological significance on a, in the Yale portion of the trail, so...
Okay, so I think we're a little confused, I see under number four, project tasks, I see Grassy Hill Road Parking Area, Darrell Pond, Darrell Pond Trail Maintenance, Grassy Hill Road, but I don't see on the project task, what you have listed above, which is Whistletown Road Trailhead. So, my question is, is there going to be parking created also at the Whistletown Road?
Yes, the proposal did include a parking area on Whistletown Road. So, that may be something I can discuss with the state. Our scope of work did indicate that we were doing work on Whistletown Road.
But it doesn't appear under the project tasks, under number four, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, that Whistletown Road was definitely included, because under number three, trail improvements, there's no indication there either, that there would be parking created at Whistletown.
Okay.
So, under three and four.
Three and four.
It simply says, Whistletown Road Trailhead Locations.
Okay, constructing new parking lots at Grassy Hill Road, Darrell Pond, and Whistletown Road Trailhead Location.
So, if you're just looking at the chart?
Right.
So, I get...
Under three, but then, but then it doesn't appear under four, for project tasks and anticipated completion timeline. Okay, and finally, I did observe the area by, at Walnut Hill, which had been used rather informally as a parking area. Is there going to be any cleanup of that area, as it's going to be eliminated?
Currently, no. There's no work being performed there. The sightline was too poor, so Victor, Benny, our town engineer, felt that would have been a traffic hazard at this time.
Alright, so it's just going to remain in its present condition?
Correct.
Thank you.
Gary, are all the, all these sites are on town property?
That's correct.
Okay, are there any other...
They're within the town right-of-way.
They're within town right-of-way. Okay. Are there going to be other entrances to this, on other land, on Yale or any other land? Or is it all the town?
There'll be Yale, from Whistletown Road, so you'll have the parking area, it'll be on the west side, you'll have to walk up the road, but there'll be the trailhead entering into the Yale property. Obviously, from Grassy Hill, you won't enter town property, but the state property, the state forest. So, just to be clear on the trail work, it will go, continue through state property, up to Grassy Hill Road, and across the street, as it continues onto Salem. There'll be no work in Salem.
Okay, and the maintenance of the trail is town, on town property is going to be held up by the town, and the state's going to do...
Currently, by the town, on town property, state would maintain.
State maintains the state, and Yale will maintain. Is part of this on the Yale property?
Part of the agreement that we have with Yale for the right to pass and repass over their property, is that the, if you will, the friends of Darrell Pond, folks who use the trail, will, through the process of using the trail, maintain it. But I do believe that parking wreck...
But you don't foresee a big budget item to maintain these trails?
Pardon?
You don't foresee a major budget item to maintain these trails?
No.
Alright. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just that, so the 20% match required, we will be supplying through in-kind?
In-kind services, that's correct.
Okay.
Move to approve a special appropriation, the amount of $49,785 in CNRE Fund 32, to revenue and budget accounts to be established, titled, "Mianic Eight Mile River Watershed Trail for the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection's Recreation Trails Program Grant Award," and forward to the Board of Finance for approval, and a town meeting approval is necessary.
Second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? We'll move on.
Mark, can I just add that just kudos to the town and to Gary for getting this grant in? I think this is a pretty, pretty cool thing for the town. I think it'll be pretty well-used. We don't have many 12-mile trails that go across all towns, and that's, this is a good work.
Yes, indeed, and the whole idea is to connect a trail system that goes across the state, I think. You know, what's the number R. Carlson keeps throwing at us? From back there, I'll repeat it, what is it?
The Airline Trail. With the Wild, Eight Mile River, Wild and Scenic River Watershed Group, acquiring two other small, narrow slices of land that will allow us to go from Darrell Pond to San Diego State Forest.
Wow, it's like 100 miles. It's something crazy to throw in, which is, you know, a couple hours of work.
How do you get back to your car? And your 11 spots down there, yeah.
Wait for a seat bus, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark, for that comment. Thank you, Gary.
Jesus, you need a plane ticket to get back.
Get walked to the airport.
Yeah.
The next one is a special appropriation for the purchase of, installation of a new enhanced 911 phone system. This is a $23,229 request from the CNRE Fund 32, with some matching grants. Dick Morris is here, he's our emergency operation, emergency, what are you? Emergency guy?
Management director.
I tell you what, you're my god when it comes to Hurricane Whip up the coast. I go, Dick, what do we do? You're very good at what you do, by the way. We're very thankful and blessed to have you in our community.
Thank you. So, back mid-winter, if you remember, I said that I'd be back for a special appropriation for new phones. We were told mid-year by our techs who handle AT&amp;T troubleshooting for 911, oh, by the way, your phones will not work with the new enhanced 911 system. We did not know that. So, we thought all this time that AT&amp;T would do this, then they sold to Frontier. AT&amp;T is no longer in this type of business, however, we still are going to maintain the two techs for a time being to do this. We've tried to reach out, find out who would be the best vendor to supplement our telephone system that's in our building to handle all the phones, the 911, so the dispatcher's picking up one phone, can still continue to talk to all the different individuals they talk to. Currently, in that building, as you know, over 108,000 phone calls come in and out of that building in a year's period of time. So, we started working, Deputy Taylor started a pursuit of trying to find a vendor that we could use mid-winter, right up until summertime. We hooked up with Engineer Shear to see what was going on with their phones. We had an opportunity to meet with the schools, and we found out that Sonitrol was the premier vendor that would marriage all these phones together. We started having a series of meetings on, how do we get the best phone system for this? We brought Star Computer in. Again, Bill Shear was involved with everything that we did, so we could make our phones systematic with what's going on at Town Hall in the future here, and other buildings within town. So, then we had to come up with a plan to, how are we going to pay for this? Because in November, we're getting the new enhanced 911 system, that's all fiber optic, that changes how we do 911 calls out of 171 Boston Post Road. So, we asked the state for two different grants from EMPG and the Nuclear Safety Fund, and they granted us the money to use for there, and plus the money that the town had in their CIP, I believe it is, and the money to pay for this, $23,000, comes from those grants that we're getting to pay for this new phone system that we're going to install. Without this phone system, come November, when they install the new enhanced 911 system, we will not have compatible phones that work with it. So, that's where I am at, asking you to support this grant.
So, the state has mandated this new enhanced 911 phone system? What's exactly the background here?
It isn't that they've mandated it, it's what they've done is that because of the fiber optic world and technology, they haven't changed the phone system out for 911 in 30-plus years, and what this allows you to do is voice-over internet, it allows you to text message, it allows you to do... it allows you to do much more with 911 than you've ever been able to do before. Unfortunately, they didn't market it very well to anybody and, and tell you some of the, some of the issues that would be required for you to, to prepare for it. So we didn't realize that when they did that, that our phone, our current phone system, we figured AT&amp;T is AT&amp;T, that phones will work with phones. We didn't realize that our phones were as outdated as our 911, current 911 system, and that we would have to prepare for a new generation.
So do we know how many other towns are in exactly the same situation?
Anybody that has a piece out.
Which is?
A public answer in point. I'm sorry.
So, so 60% of the towns in the state?
I would, I would say, unless they've already upgraded their phones over the years, but most dispatch centers will have to meet some objective here to, to change their phones.
So in effect, this is another unfunded mandate from the states? We have to do this if we want to be able to function properly as a town and carry out our required emergency response?
I would say yes. Could I prove it? Probably not.
So, and you have, you're confident that the system that we would be authorizing, or the town would be authorizing, is going to be appropriate for the foreseeable future?
Oh, absolutely. And, and we, we've put a lot of energy and, and time into researching and meeting with Sonatrol and, and department heads here in town to ensure that everything that we do will meet their needs in the future as well.
And they're familiar with the needs of the system and what they're doing going forward?
Correct.
They're doing this with other towns? I don't know, Sonatrol, are they locally based, or they...
They're out of Waterford, right? Pretty much? Yeah, he does, they do all, the East Lime School, so our system's going to marriage with them, it's going to marriage in the future with Town Hall, the Police Department, and the Firehouse.